Other ones, if some of them are, are going to resign.
Yep. And honestly, if I have a person that I lean towards the most, I think for environmental issues is Jeb.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because he's the more level-headed.
He's on Corbin Waters, he's been involved in that, so.
Everybody's signing.
Yes, conflict, didn't you, Stephen?
Oh.
All right, we are ready to get started, so we'll stand for the pledge and allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Get my microphone on. See, Jerry, you didn't even have to tell me.
Jerry, can you?
Said you didn't even have to tell me to get my microphone on. I got it on. So, good morning to those online and those here. We will start with the agenda confirmation. Anything to add or change to the agenda?
Nothing from administration.
Anyone?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
We'll do it through.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. I noticed that we're on a pretty tight schedule for, fast schedule today to get to those coffee, that coffee and, and tea and coffee. I don't think we have tea, but for the cookies and hot chocolate and coffee. So, minutes. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Oops, I just lost mine. The only thing I saw that I would like to maybe clarify just a little bit was under, on page one, under agenda and minutes, where it's number three under agenda minutes, says motion and second to approve the consent agenda and remove. It kind of mean, I'm just, it does not quite clear to say it's the agenda, or if it's the items on the consent agenda. So, maybe just say, maybe say just the items on the consent agenda, except those two removed, or. I don't know how, we just word that, just a hair different, it's just, it's not approving the consent agenda, it's approving the items on it. So, how do we word that? Because we just approved the agenda prior to that.
Is it, did we approve the consent agenda, the items on the consent agenda, but we removed?
Yes, that is.
The resolutions.
Right, but that is approving the items on the consent agenda, not approving the agenda. Maybe just the consent agenda items.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda items.
With removing the.
The resolutions to vote on separately. There you go.
That's the only thing I thought.
I did not have anything.
I, what did I have in here? Number, on page two of three, number six, motion and second to approve their present, resolution 2K, amended resolution 1H. Do we want to say? I know what it means, but do we want to make it a little more clear that we?
Which, which amends it?
Under auditor treasure.
So, like, we took out the Tyler technologies, do we want to say that we still kept the dollar amount? And then, you know what I mean? Because it was, wasn't it like three? I guess it says in the resolution, but.
Mary, just probably, or correct, clarify that, because that is a little bit.
It's a little confused.
It's confusing, because it says motion and second to approve resolution 2K, and then hyphen amend resolution ten. So, that. So, it should probably say which amends resolution 1021.
Yeah.
I mean, instead of just the hyphen, so we, so it's not confused that we're voting on two resolutions.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay, so just add the word, motion second, 2K, which amends resolution 1021 1H. Okay, any other corrections, additions?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Erica. Any other comments? All those approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, consent agenda. Will take a motion to approve any of those unless someone has something, a question, you can ask a question now, or you can just pull the whole item.
I got a question, page 23 of 76.
What about it?
So, it has the, the fees for the audit, but it doesn't have a total. Do we want to include a total?
Mary, this was just a.
Yep, that's, I mean, we approved the last one, yeah. Okay, perfect.
So, we don't have?
Nope, we're good.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Erica.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, open forum.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jerry.
Morning, Jerry.
I'm here to tell you about the service I received in the License Bureau recently. Amin was five transfers for title correction. I went in there, I had one, one of them was a title for a 1974 Charger. You remember those, God?
The title bounced on that one. Well, the gals worked on it, I had Red and Green and Stacy, they all worked on those titles. I got that title, do you know? I got that title, I went in there on a Monday, I got that title in my hand on Saturday. And that was a problem that I just pushed aside, and it was years old. And I had another one, it was just a simple transfer, an old junky car I bought. And that one went through fast as well. So, I, I did five of those. Four of them have been taken care of fast and easy, and I'd like to say that our, our, our License Bureau is being run very efficiently and with a smile. And that's nice to know. Also, I'd like to tell you one other thing. I've been in and talked to Mitch. Our, our forest trails are the worst, chunkiest roads there are. I spent some time in Monoman County, in Hubbard County, and in Clearwater. They've got their trails in great shape. Our, our trails just need to be updated. They, they are, they just, they have just been neglected too long. McLaughlin had started on it, and we have to, we have to get our forest trails in, in shape with, or in the shape that some of our poor neighbors have theirs. I thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
It would be interesting, and I'm sure we don't have counts on who, you know, the usage, but I would imagine ours are used more than those other counties, too, so. I know that Dan had a, was starting to get a, kind of a systematic review of that to up, to keep, keep them in, and put, I think he actually asked to put some more money in the budgets, budget for that. And, you know, unfortunately, if we could get this new forester hired and, and, and get more revenue, I think the more revenue that that person would draw in, and the more time that, that Mitch would have to do other things would, would be of help with that. So, hopefully, hopefully, we can find someone, I, I actually think told, told someone, and hopefully, they, they'll move back to the area for the job, but I doubt it. But you never know. So, if you hear of anyone looking for forestry work, certainly have them apply. And thank you, Jerry, I happen to be in the DMV when Jerry was in there, and I thank Jerry for assisting other, you know, I know you, you were assisting someone else that day to get, get their license. And, and those little volunteer hours don't usually add up in any count anywhere, but Becker County is sure full of all people that are willing to volunteer and, and help, help their neighbor, so, thanks.
And it's always nice to hear the positive.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yep, thanks, Jerry.
All right, moving on to reports and correspondence.
I didn't have a whole lot this time. I have, had EDA in housing, we're continuing to negotiate our MMCDC contract, hoping to have something for our next board meeting, because that contract is, does expire at the end of the year. Otherwise, just attended the AMC conference. Oh, I also attended the addressing homelessness, creating a community solution for homelessness in Becker County. Just a couple statistics from that is 27% of homeowners in Becker County and 43.9% of renters pay more than 30% of their monthly income for housing, which means that they're cost burdened. So, just goes on kind of our work that we're doing in the EDA and housing, and in trying to get some affordable housing to Becker County. At the AMC, I did attend a couple workshops on, on housing. I also attended the system modernization for human services, the transition to the new department of DCYF, and then just juvenile justice reform. I thought those were all very informative workshops. And then I attended Mohubee, our Mohubee meeting, and they are, I think at like 90% enrollment, and the only openings that they have are currently for childcare, because they're trying to get more childcare providers. So, they're doing really good, right, Mohubee?
I was, I was glad to see you at the MRC meeting and listening to the discussion about the, the housing monies that are available this year. So, the state has a lot of monies available for, for low-income housing. And it was nice to see that, but I really didn't, really didn't like to hear that they were hiring 56 new employees to manage that new money. I mean, that kind of bothered me when they can send it out to local governments and probably get it to work faster and cheaper, but that's, that's, that's a state for you. Yes, I was at numerous, had numerous meetings, went, everyone, I'm sure you enjoyed AMC and the MRC meeting, it touched base on a few of the items. And the, the part I really like about going to AMC is the talking to the vendors and other commissioners and, and building those relationships up with your current vendors, plus the new, the new people that you can learn about their, about their, what they provide. And I think we talked about this last year, too, Mary, about investing, and I think we.
Well, you woke me up from a nap again, doggone it, Ryan.
We hope you didn't wake up from the nap too early, so hopefully you can get back to sleep. Whoever's online, you are, you are not muted, and we appreciate if you mute yourself.
No.
Yes.
You must have got an earful.
Whoever's online, please mute yourself. Can you mute them? All right. That's just kind of funny, though, that's in today's technology. I'm glad we didn't hear anything appropriate, like, you know, I really should tell you a story when we're, it's inappropriate time. When I was in college, we were in a fraternity, of course, and, and we had our pledges, and while you kind of ruin your pledges day or nights, and I snuck in and into my, by my pledges in their car, and got an earful of what they really thought about us. Kind of like, kind of like, got me used to being a commissioner at times. But, you know, you have to let those just slide off.
Know they had fraternities back then.
They started in 1908, in William and Mary. Do you want me to recite that? Well, Richard and I were, we had NRM, Parks and Rec and NRM, Dunlochs is moving forward with, with the, the shelter design at a 60 by 36, is that right? 60 by 36. And we're doing some follow-up with the state archaeological firms to see if we're allowed to do any fill over the top of the dig site. So, the other thing we're looking at there, and we're going to have to probably, and John, maybe you can relay this to Pelican Waters, that we're looking at expanding parking on that little drive, and maybe, you know, not blocking that, their entrance there, but parking off that road a little bit and seeing what. I'd also really like to get that big piece of machinery off from that property, because it really looks poor.
Look, what's there from up above? It's one of them.
It's like, yeah, it's like, it's that long conveyor weed thing. It's, and it's big, and it's, it's not attractive sitting in our, one of our nicest parks in this, in the county, so.
We have a rack meeting this afternoon.
Yeah, we have a rack.
If we could get them to get, I mean, it looks like it's, I don't think they do that anymore, I think they need to dispose of it somewhere.
They sold all of the equipment, but apparently that never sold.
Yeah, but, and then we'll look at cleaning that up. Richard, anything you want to add on that there?
We're still looking for that forestry position, that was part of my report, Barry.
Still your son, your son's.
And then, this Josh from Metal Lands is trying to get some money from the state to look at these corner pins, and it surprised me, some of them are off by 2,500 feet. I don't want to shock anybody about your property, he said it was not a big deal, but that, that, yeah, and I still don't fully understand the whole thing, but.
Well, what, what, there's a, there's some grant money available and, and things that may be ongoing, but, but we certainly encourage him to apply and, and bring it forward. And this will be for surveyors that are going out already, this isn't hiring someone to do, but if there's, if they're doing a survey, any part of the county that has, that doesn't have one, because some are established already, and he gave the numbers, and I can't remember what, how many he said we had, but the very low percentage, and some counties have got a lot, you know, are farther along. But, so when someone's doing a survey and they use, now you can use section corners, or you can do 80s, you know, depends on what, how deep we want to go, and that's for us to decide. But they can ask for reimbursement to find that pin, and then it'll be a public pin, you know, that every surveyor can use, and it's, so it'll, it'll cheapen up surveys, especially in the, you know, those that aren't used as much. So, we thought first come, first served on that, and there would be a dollar amount associated with, with those pins, if they aren't established, and then they, so it would help the property owner getting that survey, then it, you know, they'd get $350 for marking that pin for the, for the county, or however much.
Yeah, that's, that's all I had on NRM.
I got to get back to my.
Except for that forestry position again. You know, you might be good in that forestry position.
He was, the grant could range from 50 to 300,000, and they would, so he didn't think that would last too long, I don't have the numbers exactly.
For that, that was for the whole state?
That's what his, that's what he thought he would get.
Oh.
50 to 300,000.
Oh.
But there's, there's thousands of ones to be. All right. The other thing we talked about, we're looking at an ATV ordinance to allow ATVs to travel at Wolf Lake on the road right away, begin that spot from Wolf Lake to where the trail is. So, we thought we were going to apply for that. There are no, no updates on the Toad Mountain property. Discussion about tax forfeit lands, I don't know if we heard enough about tax forfeit lands.
Something for you, Jerry.
Oh, yeah.
I was looking, I was signed for them forest roads.
Yeah, we're, we're purchasing new signs for the forest roads, so hopefully they won't get stolen. Dave and I had a Sunnyside meeting, and we had a positive year-end, and our budget for next year looks positive. I think with the new monies coming in, and the, we're, we are knock on wood, almost full-staffed, and so they can, they can take the, take our, take our capacity, so that's good news. Also had a sheriff's, John and I had sheriff's meeting, and one of the, we had a very professional presentation from, from Deputy Douglas about the needs and the wants of the sheriff's departments. And of course, when you're looking at that kind of monies, it's a little, as a commissioner, you're, you're like standoffish and a little, I probably was a little short to Mr. Douglas, but I talked to him afterwards, and I said, you know, I really thank you, and it got me thinking about, you know, the longer-term plan. And he presented some good, good thoughts and good things to process. So, after, you know, next year, I think maybe we should have, as a board, have a meeting, or just have a work session, and just talk about long-term, long-range plans, and what, obviously, our, we're in a definite need of the, the impound area, the impound building. The suggestion was maybe we look at what, how, what space are available out there at the, at the site. So, the long-term plan then, again, this is just something to think about, and I was pretty not, not enthused about it, is to move the sheriff's department out there. Build the, I mean, this is, if the impound building was there, then it opens up, if there's enough space in the future, I'm talking two to 10 years, if the sheriff's office would be able to fit out there, if we moved that dispatch and everything. Then the next step would be remodel the current, I mean, this is just me thinking outside the box, but remodel, if we remodeled that and moved human service into this building and sold that. I mean, we're talking years and years, and this is, this is just, you know, hypothetical. So, but it's something that, you know, it's like, you know, then, then you start thinking, well, then if we could liquidate something, then it, then it's something. And I think Pat had brought this up earlier, and I think we need to, after next, after the end of the year, I think you, you look at it and then measure the square foots of, if, if human services can't fit in there, then probably it's not going to move. But if we could liquidate something, a big building, then you, then you start thinking, well, then it would make some sense.
And I think that you have a lot of human services that are working from.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, that you will probably reduce, you reduce the needs of the area. And then the other thing is, Jerry brought up, brought up the License Bureau. I've always said maybe the License Bureau should be at the mall, I mean, they would love to have a destination spot at the mall, and I think we could serve people better at, at the mall than.
I'd agree.
What we, you know, how, it's tough to get into the, you know, it's, but then again, that's another long-term, long-term plan, so. Just thought I'd bring it up, but thanks again to the sheriff's department and Deputy Douglas for, for prodding the brain a little bit and, and start to think a little bit, and I think we, we look at that and, and those long-term plans, so.
I think it's always helpful to plan. I mean, it doesn't mean you're going to do it, but you're setting out a plan and.
And you need to, you know, you need to hear from all departments, I mean, I think we've done some great things for the, for the highway department, and unfortunately, unfortunately, I was thinking we did that too good, because now the sheriff's department is always looking, comparing, like, this is what the highway department has, and you're like, oh, geez.
Well, you can see, they can see each other.
Yeah.
It's not good.
But it is, I mean, we've, we've done some great things, and I think we just keep looking.
We've talked about doing a campus complete plan out there, how things would fit, what do we, what square feet do we have available, what will fit here? We don't want to go ahead and build a impound building, and then that screws everything else up for the future, so. And that wouldn't be, I don't think, that expensive to get somebody, planner, to really look at it and lay things out, so. Something we can look at right at first year or something.
Yeah, I think the impound building is, is a very high-needs project that we're, that we've been kind of pushing down the, I mean, it just hasn't gotten done, and we need to get it done. I think, I think this board should set a goal of getting that building at least started within the next 12 months. I mean, we have to, we have to do something and get that started within the last 12 months, but whatever that may be. All right, any, or more requests?
I got one thing to add to Sunnyside. So, they have 27 beds that are full, and they, and it's, and they have 30 available, so I, that's a real positive thing, too, that's good.
Yeah, they're above, I think they budget 26.
They budget at 26, so, which is, which is good, and, and they also, yeah, that's good. Also, I went to the AMC conference, and we talked about the, this tax forfeited land, so I went to, Erica and I went to that, that, that meeting, and it was called the, it was the Tyler decision. And anyway, so Hennepin County is working on a plan to hopefully take care of that, to bring it to the legislature this coming session, and, because what, basically what the ruling said is that all ta, all tax forfeited land that is sold, the person that previously owned it has to get paid the difference of the selling of the property and what was owed on the taxes. And there's also fees for selling it and so forth, and so forth, so they'll, they'll do, so people won't just like, okay, I'm going to let my land go tax forfeited, they're going to sell it for me. So, there's going to, they're, they're, they wanted to make sure it doesn't end up like that. But some of the big problems, like, this probably doesn't affect us a great deal in Becker County, but for example, in St. Louis County, they have, what did they say, they had 800,000 tax, they managed?
900,000.
900,000 acres of land. And what they do when they sell a property, they use that money to help manage the other tax forfeited properties they have, so they won't be able to do that. So, they're really concerned about how, because, and then a lot of minerals that they take out of those tax forfeited lands help pay for things in public schools, so.
I think, I think if the legislation is going to follow through like we anticipate, those properties aren't going to be affected, just like our majority of, of tax forfeit land will not be affected, because the look-back period was maximum that they were talking, I think was 15 years. But, I mean, it's all in legislation's hands, they can, they can.
And, and, yeah, they won't have to pay that, but they won't be able to use the monies they make from selling other tax forfeited lands to help manage those, that's, that's their, that was their big concern.
A lot of the workshop was about like what's going to happen in the future.
Future, right.
Because, you know, you have, one of the examples they gave was a school that was tax forfeited that costs, you know, three quarters of a million dollars to clean up, and the county, of course, had to pay for that before you could do anything with it. So, it's, it's those properties that is going to be the bigger issue.
That's been the discussion, too, that, that this might address those properties, because, I mean, we've had a few of those ourselves that are very costly to, to manage. And hopefully, they, what we, what we've asked for is the state to have kind of a, a fund to offset some of those huge costs.
And what the proposal is actually, is that that property then becomes the state until it's taken care of.
Yes.
That's, that's what the proposal is, is that it, it doesn't really become, because right now, as soon as the sale happens, the title or the deed is transferred to the county, or what they're proposing is that it goes to the state first to get that taken care of.
And then the county.
So, that the county won't be responsible for the cleanup.
They'll just manage.
Yeah, because we've done two and three Z, that old turkey plant, the furniture store, had the lake park old elevator that burned down, we had to, we had to pay for all the.
Three, four small gas stations.
Yeah, and at least there's a fund for the, there's a fund there for the, for the soils, but.
Stuck with a lot of costs.
Yeah, it's, it's a big, and then it's even time and commitment to monitor those till they get to the end of their, so, anyway.
So, it's something to watch.
So, and then also at the AMC, I'll talk about this first, so, this guy by the name of Doug. the name of Doug Omen did this, went to every courthouse in the state of Minnesota and he took a picture of them. And then there's a story about each courthouse and we're in there. So it's a picture book, so it's easy to read.
I should've brought my old one in. I've got one from about, what, dozen years ago?
Yeah, and, and so I, I've read a little bit of this, not much, but this is really, I, it's interesting to me. Anyway. And then he was a keynote speaker. Another keynote speaker, uh, by the, the name of Tony Rusi, talked about cyber security and I was amazed. He can hack into anything that's run by Wi-Fi, anything. So like our cameras, they, somebody could hack into our cameras. And, and they don't even have to, if it's password protected, it doesn't matter. They have a program that can run nine-hundred-million passwords and then they'll eventually get it. So we have to be very careful about how we answer emails and so forth, because they're, then they send an email and then you click on a link and then now, now you're, you've let someone into your server, so we just have.
It's a reminder to.
Yeah.
Not click on anything.
Yes.
I try not to, but. It was very, he was very similar to that one we had a few, well, a few years ago where they went online. And that, that time, the, the, he was an FBI, Jerry, I don't know if you were at that convention where the FBI, he was a former FBI security guy, and he went, picked a town at random, went into that, and he, he actually went into someone's house and, and turned their lights on and off, because you have all these smart things. And he was in someone's, we were looking at someone's video that they have, a live video of their house, like, this is, so, yeah, cover those videos up and, um, and don't, these, all these smart things, you don't want someone to shut your refrigerator, freezer off or something. So I don't think they're as valuable as what, or as good as what they.
I just have my Christmas lights, so you can turn my Christmas lights on and off.
They're flashing, it's not, it's not a.
Yeah. And then I had a, I also had a fair board meeting. Um, so they talked about twenty-twenty-four updates and they need to either repair or replace quite a few of their bleachers that are in the, um, uh, the, the arena, okay? Uh, they also, they talked about ways they could do that. They talked about spending some of the fair board money. They could also rate, they talked about ways of raising some money also, too, to get new bleachers if they wanna do that. Um, they talked about sponsorship of bleachers and matching funds and so, so forth. They, they talked about a bunch of stuff that they're gonna keep working on. They're also, they also, they have that BMX track that's at the back part of the, of the, uh, fair, fair, or the arena grounds. They wanna level that out so they can use it, use it for more stuff, like more parking, um, for, for, uh, things, events that are going on inside the arena. And then they also wanna charge more, charge, they aren't charging every car that goes in there to park for like the derbies and the tractor pulls. So they wanna charge for those.
I've been paying every time I go through that gate.
Yeah, well, no, they, they, but they don't, like.
I know, they don't, the, the people in the back.
Yeah, so they, they wanna, they wanna try to eliminate as many, the more, they wanna eliminate some of the vehicles that park in there, so they wanna charge them so they don't come in. They, they don't really wanna make money, they just wanna come in there. So that's kind of the way they, and if they do come in, they wanna charge them. And then, uh, for next year, they also, uh, they talked about the tractor pull a little bit, how they lost money. And if they kind of adjust the way that they do wristbands, to give away wristbands, they can probably break even pretty easily. They kinda, they kinda didn't manage that too. Also, they were talking about that. Then they also had a proposal from one of the committees to maybe have a rodeo on Wednesday and possibly Wednesday and Thursday and not have the tractor pull. So they, 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 they're, they're exploring that option, too. Then they also talked about having a cornhole tournament on Wednesday, which I would probably win. Anyway, then, uh, then I had a DAC meeting and there, the, the DAC is having a fundraiser for a sensory room. Um, a sensory room is a place where people can go to to calm down, to relax. They can, they can, and, and, and that's a big deal in a, in a place like a development and achievement center for them to be able to do that. So there, the fundraiser is on February twenty-ninth. It's called CAP. It's gonna be labeled Cabin Fever Reliever. Now, I don't know where it is, I forgot. But I, but I will, I will, I will next time tell you where it's at.
Go, but you remember.
They have a memory care thing?
They, they might. And then, and then this week, we are doing interviews for our business manager position at the DAC. And then the last thing I had, uh, John and I didn't have a transit meeting, but Kevin sent us some updates. And so rider ships for November of last year are up eleven percent. And for the year, they're up eighteen, or eight-point-three percent for the year, for year-to-date. So that's real cool. Um, budget's good. Also, he said that the revenues are up two-hundred-and-fifteen percent of what is required by the local contract share. So the state requires that you have a certain number of revenues generated in order for them to help support, you know, the, the funding. And now, two-hundred-and-fifteen percent sounds like, holy moly, you know, but actually, if you think about it, we charge a dollar fifty a ride. So it's only, it's about thirty-eight thousand. So it's not like it's a crazy number. Um, and then, uh, the state approved the contract for next year, the operating contract, and increased it by three percent from, from two thousand twenty-three. We also, uh, submitted an application for another bus for two thousand twenty-four. Kevin said we gotta keep doing that, even though we haven't got the bu, previous bus.
Previous, too.
But, but, yeah, so, but if we don't do that, then we aren't on the list to get a bus. Who knows, we'll get, maybe might get it, who knows? But we are on the list. That's, that's all I had.
I'll go through mine pretty quick. Uh, Richard and I had environmental, we discussed the transfer of solid waste to different sites, Fargo, Polk County, Grand Forks and so on, along with the incinerator that we're tied to. We're trying to look at the best cost-effective solutions for what we can do here in Becker County. And, uh, still possibly contributing a couple thousand tons of Polk County, but we're gonna have a little short meeting after the board meeting here on environmental and a few things that have developed in Polk County. So, um, the committee recommend moving forward with the purchase of one used trailer from BMT or past haulers, because we could use one more. And Clay County's looking to purchase one, too. So we're gonna go out and we get pick of the litter. Becker County gets first choice, so that'll probably come aboard next week.
And then John, we did haul garbage both ways.
Yeah.
Last week.
We got the new truck and a couple of trailers or.
Yeah, and so that is.
Seems to be working pretty good. We still got a few glitches to work out with Clay County and City of Fargo and hopefully we can meet in person with Fargo and come up with some solutions, so.
Now, Richard, just to clarify, you're not hauling the same garbage both ways, right? Because that wouldn't make much sense.
It wouldn't. But, uh, yeah, and so we did, you know, the trucking rates have gotten so, we, I've reached out to a couple trucking companies, part, because I've got some little bit of scuff from why we did this. Nobody wanted, uh, us to be in the trucking business and I didn't either. But the trucking rates are so, are getting so expensive. Uh, and so, and if we hired a, the private sector to do it, we couldn't haul it both ways. And I think we should make that understood, that we, Clay County is not interested in trading trailers with, with another private company, but they will with us. And so it is a big, it is a big thing that, and it is our first week of doing it, did, did go good, so.
And also Steve reported on the small battery collections. They're putting out more collection sites throughout the county. And if I remember right, I think last year is around fourteen-hundred pounds of just all the way from hearing aid batteries up to D batteries or whatever.
But it's also the, the batteries for, for like your saws or your, I mean, I have a, I have a couple bad DeWalt batteries and they go out, I mean, they go out, you know, every few years, they better.
So that's, they're looking at expanding that and really hasn't much additional cost because in the trucks are there picking up, dumping the dumpsters, they got a compartment that they dump these in and bring them back and.
But I think Steve's goal was to get them out just about every rural site, too. I mean, I think the convenience.
So the big issue when they come in with garbage, that's what's causing some of these fires in the transfer station, because the lithium and they get crushed and they scrape along the floor at the loader and get hot and, so, so. Good program, and I guess I haven't deposited any, but I got a little spot in the garage and I started collecting.
Yeah, I got a stack of them and I'm gonna, that's where I'm gonna take.
I was, I have a DeWalt one that's bad and I was, I, I wrote bad on it, because I always charge it and put it in my thing and it never works, so I wrote bad on it. But I'm just waiting for, figure out where, where there's a spot to dump, to put that.
One other thing, too, our futures program out there is, is really expanding. That's where you bring in stuff that's good for resale or somebody else can use it. A lot of stuff is actually now being stored outside. And, uh, Steve's gonna look at some, hopefully seek some grants out to possibly expand that building or possibly even put the futures in its own separate building someplace out there. So it's, it seems to be, well, he related, there is something that came in, an old dentist chair or dental equipment, like x-ray. And he said, who's gonna buy that? Somebody came up from South Dakota and bought it.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Some collector.
So, good place for Christmas gifts. Not for your wife.
Never know.
Uh, that's about all we had on environmental, had finance, with a short highway yesterday. And mainly what we did is re, reviewed the five-year plan and we're updated on what smart projects and the costs and estimates prior to the, uh, choosing taxation and the road hearing of coming up on the fourteenth.
Fourteenth is.
So, uh, then they did fill that, uh, vacant position tack, or spot, oh. Uh, we did have a short, Pat and I had a short airport committee meeting yesterday afternoon. Mainly what's happening out there, they're gonna be moving forward on hangar construction, bid, letting. I don't think it'll be in December yet, but probably first part of January. And looking at the funding for it, so I think the city will probably take the lead on funding and there'll be a co-op project and it's, uh, brings in money. They got a waiting list.
I think, I think Pat mentioned it at the end of finance and, and I, I, I think I came to the same conclusion. If it's a moneymaker, there's no sense for both people to, to borrow money to do it. It's, it's, if it pays the bills, there's no sense for us to borrow money and the city.
And one thing they're gonna do is they're gonna reevaluate where everybody's out there, because they, they wanna rent out these new hangars so somebody might have a little halter-like, because they're, they're big forty-foot doors. And so they might be switching things around out there first, come first serve, so. And we did increase, uh, last year, the rents on all the hangar out there, too. There's, so there's more income coming into the airport budget, so. That'll be coming up, just wanted to alert you on that. The project will be one-point-two to one-point-four million to build those out there. So the site work, prep work is already done for them. And then a little common AMC, uh, attended quite a few of the breakout sessions, uh, mainly on transportation broadband and a few others. And not a lot changed to our transportation broadband plan, the moving forward for adoption, so hopefully. And there's a lot of money out there for broadband, whether we have providers in this area to take advantage. Hopefully we do have some for, a lot of it has to do with that last mile where one resident, half-mile driveway or down a mile township road and they just can't afford the charge of individual Ford. So there's some ways to go around to help on that, so. And we see a lot, you know, even twenty-five-three services is not considered much service anymore. So they're talking minimum fifty or a hundred and then on up to.
And just to, just to give you a little bit of, of, refresh your course on that. So if, if, um, if this area is controlled by, what's the big one, um, around here? Anyway, Arvic can't just go in there and do it. They have to, they have to apply to do it. And if they, and if, um, if, if the other company says, no, we, we want to, and they don't, so Arvic won't even put a formal requesting, because it's like a hundred, well, that years ago was a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty thousand just to put in the, to do the upfront work. And then they could get denied because, um, your other vendor is saying, no, we're gonna do that. But then it, so they don't wanna, they wanna feel that out before they even apply. And if, and if they say, no, we're gonna try to keep it, they're not gonna apply. Um, so if they don't apply, it just sits in limbo for, forever until someone does something. But if they move forward with that application, and then they say they're gonna do it, then they have to do it within two years. So, but it is a cost to even go after something if it's in someone else's territory. So it's kind of a, it's, it's a more complex than what you, what you'd think. It's not something that you can just, um, fill, fill in the, you know, give some, the Arvic and go, go get this. Well, they can't necessarily just do that. So it's more complicated than it should be, but, um, that's part of the problem. Anything else, John?
No, that's all I have.
Um, any other thing under, anyone else have anything, reports, correspondence? Uh, the only thing, Sheriff Glender, I think, is gonna bring forward the coroner position next meeting. Um, we discussed that a little bit and we had one applicant and we're gonna negotiate. Um, Pat's gonna do some negotiations there and bring that to our next meeting. And, um, appointments. I had a call that I might have to re, or appoint a new person to fill someone's position, but we'll wait for the formal, um, at, at Cormant Watershed for that. But, um, anyway, we're off to, then if there's no one, have any appointments, we're going to move on to our introduction of our newly appointed county assessor. Uh, Tony, why don't you sit up and, uh, welcome to Becker County. Uh, introduce yourself and, and, uh.
Sure.
We'll introduce ourselves.
Okay, thank, thank you. I'm very happy to be here. Um, I, I started out, well, I, well, I was after high school, after college at Crookston, I was a dairy farmer. And I did that till my mid-thirties. Then I got an assessor's license and I was four years in Otter Tail County and then nineteen years in Lake County and then back to Otter Tail County and now here, uh, starting December first in Becker. Uh, happy to be here. I have a very good crew up there that I'm working with, I'm very, very pleased with. And I, I guess I don't know what, what else was, you need to know. I, I had six grandchildren and that's, that's my main focus in my life when I'm not at work.
Good, good. Well, I think, has everyone introduced themselves to Tony? I know I've met, so go ahead.
John Oakley, District Three Commissioner, takes Lakeview, Burlington, City of Fraser, Erie, Homersville Townships.
Okay, nice to meet you, John.
Erica Jepson, District One, the whole eastern side of Becker County. I can't list all the townships, because there's, I think, eleven or twelve of them. I could if I, if I really thought it out, but, um, my husband and I also were dairy farmers, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Nice.
Yeah.
I, I've met you, Tony. I'm Dave Meyer again. But I, but I, I'm also in District Two, which is Ward Two and Three of the city.
Yep.
I'm Barry Nelson and, um, District Five, so that's the western part, Lake Park and Cormant, Lake Unis area, go all the way up to Hamden, Maple Grove and White Earth, so.
Okay.
Um, and actually, if you want to, if you want to go by, I actually was born on a dairy farm, a farm and, and we milk cows, not very, in the old, that's all the cream cans in the, so.
Yeah.
But that, we, didn't, that didn't last very long, so. Probably, uh, John Purplery started on a dairy farm, too.
Yeah, for twenty years.
Yeah.
Yeah, Richard Barber, District Four, also dairy farm.
Not currently, though.
No.
Not currently. Dave, you're the only one that didn't.
No, my, my grandpa had some cows and I didn't wanna do it.
Okay, nobody wanted to do it. Well, welcome. And, um, we, um, look forward to, this is, uh, Jerry Schramma, a former county commissioner in the front row here. Um, stay away from him and don't have free coffee up there and you'll do well.
He doesn't hear very well, so you're fine. So.
Well, Commissioner Nelson, if I could, if I could say, the, uh, Tony Vegan brings is, is a real, um, long career as, not only as a chief deputy, but in interim department and in the assessor's office for large and small counties. So we're, he has a real wealth of experience. And, uh, I know he hit the ground running when he started here just recently. Um, I was able to see him on day one and of course I was at the AMC conference, but he's independently, um, K-9 Cooper would like to visit as well, Tony Vegan. And, uh, but again, I just want to make sure the board knows that, uh, two commissioners were very much involved in the interview process as well, you know, commissioners on our, on our courthouse committee.
Okay. Well, thank you and welcome. And, um.
Thanks, Tony.
We'll, um, well, I'm sure we'll see you down here every so often, so.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Okay, is that all you need?
That's all we need. So thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to stay here.
Thank you.
And, and Commissioner, with the board's permission, could we, could we do the K-9 Cooper thing?
Yeah.
Now, if that works?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
Um, Sheriff Glender, do you, would you wish to do the K-9 Coopers now or would you like to wait?
I can wait.
Okay.
You can wait, okay, I'm sorry. He came up, yeah. He was speaking for you, so.
He was shaking when, when he walked in.
Yeah. I noticed, I noticed he was sniffing a lot, so I don't, detecting anything? Pat, go ahead.
All right, very good. Um, yeah, you covered much of, of, a lot of stuff I was gonna cover the quarter. I was gonna cover the coroner position. It was decided the sheriff committee, you would be involved along with HR and administration. We'll interview the one candidate that we have and we're gonna do that this week and we will hopefully bring you a recommendation at the board meeting on the nineteenth. I also attended the AMC conference. I sort of inserted myself into the general policy committee because you were all at other policy committees, but Kerry Smith, our HR director and Steve Scoog, were also at the AMC conference as well. Chips contracts, we are reviewing them right now. Then we have four applicants for three slots. Our goal here is to take it to courthouse committee, which will be this Thursday and then bring you a recommendation of who, who we would like to get authorized for a contract, for a two-year contract beginning in 2024. And so those are just, the general ones they have. I'll just remind the board that we have one board meeting on the nineteenth and I expect to have a department head meeting also this week. Under budget update, I'll just continue on, Commissioner Nelson, is the, you know, we, you know, there's not much to review at this point in time with budgets. We've gone through all the committee reviews multiple times. We've gone through departmental review individually. Our plan right now is to get some direction of the board with the classic comp study and we'll make some modifications on wages if necessary. The TNT hearing this Thursday will be at six oh one PM and we'll have a full presentation for the board and seek any input from the public relating to that presentation. Capital improvement plan, as you know, the board did allow us to put together a preliminary plan and review that with you. This wasn't something we were expecting the board to approve as part of the budget. It was something we wanted to show you what a county-wide plan looked like. We still have an outstanding department, the sheriff's office, that we'll be getting some information from, but our hope is, is perhaps we can review that preliminary plan with you on the, on the nineteenth. Wanted to remind the board, and this is number three, that there is a annual business meeting. You've all participated in that earlier in January. It's the first Tuesday after the first Monday, so it'll be Tuesday, January second will be the meeting. We have advertised that and it'll be a business meeting again when you select the chair and vice chair, but it's also a regular meeting. And so we'll take a break after the business meeting and then we'll, we'll go and do the county's business here for 2024. Legislative platform, we only had one item and I reviewed that with you last board meeting and that is to receive the revenue from the sales tax from the highway construction. But the EDA also brought up an idea that I wanted to review with you. We have a significant amount of Murrell money and that's been used for, for housing construction and the EDA board would like to see if we could retain that revenue and that money. So unless the board has any objection, we'd have two legislative items. One is get that sales tax back for the highway building, but also try to retain that Murrell money. And we're not alone and many counties have Murrell money. And right now, if we do nothing, that Murrell money would eventually go back once we sell all those homes. And we think by retaining that money, that's already been invested in the county, that would be very valuable to make investments in housing into the future. And so I guess I would just ask if, if the board is supportive of that.
I, I am. You know, I, I did talk to somebody down at AMC and it, it sounds like it would take, it could potentially take some federal legislation also, but it's, but he said a good place to, to start is definitely at the state level. So I, I think, I think that's a good, a good thought. And I know Tom Clevey from our EDA has already, you know, started talking to local representatives about, you know, making sure that they're aware of it. So I mean, otherwise we're gonna hang on to that money, I think, until 2038 or something like that.
Yeah, Mary won't let go of it.
So, so it just, it, it makes sense for us to be able to invest.
It could be longer than that too, because you can reinvest in, in the current homes and refinance, so they could go on, they could go on forever. And the program is no longer, it's, it's just, so there should be a transition away from it at some point.
And Cody Piper, economic development specialist, has reached out also to legislators. We're, we're thinking about just an informal legislative meeting with them if they're willing, but we don't have an issue just reaching out to them individually, putting a letter together. But, but certainly we'd be curious to know if commissioners wanted to be involved in that. It's not uncommon to either have them involved in teams or in person. They're very motivated at this point in time to author legislation if the county has an, has an interest. So I, I think we're gonna start with just reaching out to them individually and to see if they want to be part of a group meeting.
And Robert Kupac was at the homelessness solution meeting on the thirtieth. So, I mean, he obviously has an interest in some housing, so.
I'll just move on, Commissioner Nelson.
Just with, with the EDA, would you, would the board like to see what the progress has been on EDA for the last year? I mean, we've been, what the accomplishments have been maybe? And maybe the EDA board had that, has that in, so.
Cody Piper usually comes here quarterly, so he's due for a meeting, so we can bring him back and give a full update to the board if you like.
He's doing a good job. He's brought it further than, it was kind of sitting still, but he's, he's bringing it for, further ahead and, yeah, he's doing a good job.
You want that for December nineteenth?
Well, I, I, you know, I think we should get a year-end update, see what, what progress and what, you know, I think even Commissioner Knutson said that last year, he wants to see that. I mean, he said, I'll, I'll be back and see how the progress goes.
I think he'd be surprised too, because he's doing some stuff we weren't doing before. So.
If, if it's, if he can, if it can, otherwise he can wait.
We could do it in January.
It can wait till January.
Wait through the whole year, yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Authorization to purchase a vehicle, we discussed, is that finance committee. So this is a vehicle that has been totaled due to a hitting of a deer. We have reviewed options and I've given a copy to the department head to review or staff on potential replacement vehicles that are available. And it was talked about at finance committee and the direction was to bring it to the, back to human services committee. So on your Wednesday, human service committee, Denise will review that packet of information and if you're interested in selecting a vehicle, we'll, we'll bring back it to the board on the nineteenth and get it authorized. And then the last item we have is the class and comp study. I'm just gonna ask the board, we probably have a, a little bit of work, we've got handouts for you. Did you wanna, you wanna do that right now or do you want to go through the rest of the items that you have and do it at the end?
Could just, we'll get on it right now.
Okay, very good.
Because we got tea at the end, so it's not gonna.
Very good. You've all been emailed that, but we made more copies in case you wanted them.
You certainly, if you have them, you certainly can have them all.
Yeah, we could take care of that if you want us to hand things over. Let's take one.
I guess, just to start, what is the, I mean, I had, I think we, I think we look at what are, what is, what is everyone's expected timeline of this? No. I would, I would suggest that we review, obviously have some discussion today and then maybe look at if, if we have issues or things that we want to bring back and, but we should make a decision at our next meeting. I, I have some concerns or some questions on how we, or.
My, my, my biggest concern is we had asked for it to be at nineteen grades and it appears as though the, the grades changed from ten up and we raised the, I mean, we, we're not, this, this new one at twenty grades isn't doing anything for employee retention. It isn't really addressing any of, many of the concerns that I had. It, it costs more money and it is costing more money for the top.
Yeah.
Ten people.
The biggest.
So, I mean, I, I just.
Biggest red flag for me was that, Tony, I was thinking that when we expand the, the classes, it would just get more classes within and it looks like he just pulled this up. I mean, our top spot now, county administrator went from the new max or the, it, it went up over ten bucks, ten bucks an hour. How, how did we go from, how did it go from increased ten dollars an hour when you're, obviously they have the same data you're going on? I, I, I don't understand how that.
I didn't, I didn't understand that either.
I mean, how they got that.
Because the county administrator in the original one was within market value.
Yes.
Yeah, so we don't have the market, do you have the market value?
I, I do.
I've got it on my.
Yeah.
So I just, I, I, I'm not any closer, if we're gonna be, you know, very honest and I, I understand that we're at a time crunch, that we have union negotiations that need to occur. But my, my thought is we need, we need, maybe we set a committee of commissioners to really work with the person that is doing the study.
David Drow, the consultant.
The consultant, thank you. To really get him to understand, although I believe I have told him, you know, get him to understand really what, what the concerns are because we, we need to look at employee retention and we have several positions that are hard to fill, that I don't think either of these, especially the new one that is at twenty grades, either of these is gonna address any of that. The, the new one does address our assistant.
And our first attorney.
Attorneys, you know, somewhat. But I just, that's my thoughts.
Somehow we gotta come to, come consensus, move forward. So we've been kicking the can down since September and all our union negotiations have all been canceled, moved because we haven't done what we're, said we're gonna do.
Well, I don't think that.
Yeah, let me finish.
Yeah, go ahead.
And we need to, I think, look at the whole thing as a whole and, and adopt something and move forward and work on after we adopted it. And, and there's mechanisms in there to do that. If we don't move forward, I don't know where negotiations are gonna be, sometime later next year.
Well, that too. And Bob Bjorkland kinda, I, I said it's not gonna get any better and it is a market. And I didn't, you know, I've not been thrilled with it either, but it is what it is and it is a market. It's, it goes with the market. I don't know how you can change that.
We're not the only county that's facing, in the state, that's facing retention issues. Following the news, St. Louis County, it's the same thing with, they're all over the state for law enforcement. They're all trying to.
Yep, the postal service.
There's only so many people to draw from, it seems like.
Yeah.
And.
Which I, I agree, but, but because we are at, because we, we are running into that with our deputies, for instance, we shouldn't be lowering the, the starting wage by a dollar. So, I mean, that, that's where my concern is, is we know the issue is, but, but yet the, the study has us lowering it when every other county around us is, is paying more. So how are we going to retain deputies in our county when every other county around us is, is paying more?
Well, you kinda gotta, you know, it's kinda where you want to work too. And then this is just wages, is that right? It's just wages, so it really doesn't show any of our benefits either. And when I look at, when I looked around at what, and I, this isn't counties and it's my own little study, but in Becker County, these jobs are good jobs if you compare them to the, to everybody else around us. And there's some really good benefits here, there's a lot of paid time off, there's just, this, this is, it, it's not, it, it is a good place to work and, and if you have money matters, but it is, retention is a problem for everybody. Go to the postal service. I mean, that, that used to be a really good job and it still pays the same, but.
Well, we're not, this certainly isn't gonna fix all of our problems. I mean, there, there's no question, but when, I have, I have some concerns at the, at the top and I don't know how, when you go from a fourteen to a twenty, that, that administrator position gains ten dollars an hour. I mean, how do, how does that happen? I was, I was anticipating that dollar mount was gonna stay the same and we just expand the, the slots. So that twenty, the twenty-one, it, it just doesn't make sense to me. How, how did that, how did that happen? So you go from, and you get the percentage of market study, I mean, there's a hundred and seventeen percent of the market study.
Well, and, and the HR director already was twenty percent above market value and we raised it another four dollars an hour at the max end and three dollars an hour at the minimum end. So that, that, that's where I, it, it makes no sense to me that we're not putting our money where we need to for the positions that we need. We cannot be a top-heavy county where we're paying top dollar, way above market for all the top positions. We have to think about the ones that are at the, at the lower end. Those are the ones that we're seeing the struggle.
That went up to a hundred and twenty-three percent of market. And that, how did that, how does that happen?
A hundred and twenty-three percent is a lot more money at, when you're talking sixty-three dollars an hour versus nineteen dollars an hour. You know, that's a lot more money per year when, when you're paying that much above market value at the top end of the scale.
One thing I wanted, and this was what I was gonna say, John, it's, it's not just our fault that, that we're delaying, and not just our fault that the unions aren't, I would have thought that unions wanted to be meeting with negotiations and look at what we're talking about and be involved in it and they've chose not to. And I, and that's, that's not, that's on them. If they don't, if they choose not to be involved, I mean, I was hoping we'd have input and we got a kind of a nasty letter from one of the, one of the unions. It's like, we want to do what's best for our employees, but we want to do it within, within reasonable dollar amounts too. So I think if we wouldn't have looked at this, I think we'd have been scolded by, by those same people. So it's a difficult, difficult road to handle when you, when you're dealing with some of the union reps that you're damned if you do, damned if you don't type scenario for us. But.
So I do, I do understand the, the urgency of us to do this and, and I am willing to do whatever we need to do to get it done, as long as it's done right. That, that's, that's my issue.
I think I, Pat, did you get the answer to any of those questions that, I mean, like the, we, one thing I had mentioned to Pat is that if there's, you know, I talked to the DDA down at AMC and it seems like, and they, they're willing to offer another, another person to come and try to maybe better dialogue with us or, or better explain. And I think that Dr. Tessa, is it Harris, was one of the, one of the individuals that does this also. But, I mean, I have, I have come to the, I have come conclusion that this is a, somewhere we need, we need to go and, and with Robert here or Bob Bjorkland last time saying that, you know, this is, I've come to the consensus that we have to move forward and I, and this is where we're at. But I look at some of these top, the top positions specifically and I, I just think they need to be, we need to have a sit-down and ask how we can, how we can modify some of these positions. I mean, how, can we move these? I mean, we have some at a hundred and twenty-three percent. If they went down a grade, are they gonna be at ninety-eight percent and that's, that's acceptable? Again, a twenty, twenty grade, we don't have number twenty up there and we don't have number one and then there's, there's.
We technically don't have anything fifteen through eighteen because the other two are elected officials that aren't in the, aren't gonna be on the scale. So technically from fourteen to nineteen, we have nothing.
But, I mean, we, we, we do need to move forward and figure out how we can do this. I think those, those specific questions, I look at and, and, and we have to actually go, go through committee to some of those, some of those job descriptions that have changed, I think we need to look at at committee level to, to confirm that that's, that's appropriate, that's appropriate for what they were graded at. The other thing is I didn't see on your sheet, you said there was a veteran service went from seven, six to seven, went down one and I didn't see that on the sheets. Can you show me where it went down to six?
Here's this one right here. This one is. It's the top one on six. Yeah. I also have to ask why there are no child protection social workers on here.
I think they're all listed under social.
Well, we have all the different kind of social workers, but we, we don't have just a social worker. So we have adult service, behavioral health, min-choice assessor, developmental disability case manager. But we don't, like, it would make sense to me that we just have social worker because that's, my understanding is they're all looked at the same. We have one job description for social worker.
Also too, on, on, on grade nine, community health supervisor and public health supervisor, is that the same job?
They are.
Okay. And then what is it, what is supervisor? What is that?
I asked that question when I called Mark and it's a, she was trying to remove it out of there. It's, it's basically a position that's not tied to anybody.
Did the VSO, I see him on six on both of them, on fourteen and twenty. Is that, am I missing something or what? So did it change somewhere else from, it's, where does it, it says it's changed from seven to six. Where did, where was it a seven?
I believe that that was the assistant, but again. I believe it was a seven before on the original.
What, in the band and grade or?
On the very, the very first round that we did.
Did the, the fourth.
Veteran services assistant is a four.
It didn't change.
So the fir- prior to reviewing the PAQs, it was a seven and then?
Yeah, that's what I recall. Yes, on the original, it was the county veteran service officer was at a seven and then it went on to six.
So I would recommend that we have a committee that meets with the consultant. And I would also recommend that we get, take their, take their, what they've told us before where we could get a different consultant. And, and her name was what, Tessa?
Dr. Tessa, I had, last name, I'm not sure, but I think it's Harris.
I would, I would recommend we do that.
I think it's Melvin.
Does it, maybe the other gentleman was Harris?
I would recommend that. Then on the committee, we would have two of us, our HR director. I don't know what else we need.
Well, and if I could, some Commissioner Nelson, I, I strongly would urge you to have just work sessions as five commissioners. This is really important and you all need to be buying in, in all facets of it. I'm not suggesting committees don't work, but in this case, this is a very big deal. And you can have an informal meeting. It's, it'll be a public meeting. We'll advertise it. People can come. But you won't be making any decisions. You'll be, you'll be researching and providing guidance to the.
Well, if we're gonna, if we can advertise it, we can, we can have a decision.
You could, you could have an alternative board meeting, certainly can. If you want it informal, I was just suggesting you just have informal.
I don't think we have the time to do informal. I think if we're gonna do that, we need to do it and get it done.
You could call it a committee of the whole meeting. What I'd suggest is to do that. And if I couldn't, Commissioner Nelson, just, just to touch on some things, we're, we're fine with reaching out to DDA and having alternative individuals. They're fine with that. There's no concern. They, they work very well together. And so if, if you want someone else involved, that's no issue from DDA's standpoint. As far as the election positions, you know, they, they are unique because by statute, you set their salaries. Why we wanted them part of this, and they didn't need to, but they all contribute to be a part of it, was really for them. It was for them to be able to justify their position and their qualifications. It doesn't hurt them by being in the scale because again, by statute, you set their salaries. You don't set it based on the table. And, uh, I guess, because there's been some confusion on that. The appeals process, I'd want some input from the board as well. Because the appeals process, if you were to approve something, would eventually be a third-party objective as well, where if someone had an issue with where they're at, they would go through that process. And, but you might wanna talk about whether you wanna update that or revise that.
My understanding was the appeal process was for each individual employee to appeal where they are on the scale, not on the grade. Correct?
Correct, yes, they could.
So the appeal, appeal process.
Once grades are set, yes, they could.
Is, is, so, so what we're approving is the grades. Once we approve it, there's no moving it.
But there's still that appeal process that you have, the board have to decide on once we get there. And, and I guess where I'm trying to get to is, 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 I just wanna remind the board, and I know you know this, is right now you have no structure. And I know you can call the band and grade structure, but for 40 years, there's no structure. It's been nothing. And there's been no updates and job description tables. There's been nothing. If you were to accept something like this, you are buying into structure that you can eventually change as you choose to. You are the deciders. And you see, you can accept, you could agree to accept something that, look, I'm not 100% on, but I'm accepting the structure. And then we can accelerate job descriptions reviews as you choose. We normally, and I think Bob Bjorkland mentioned this, typically you'd wanna do 25% a year. We could accelerate that. We could accelerate table review. And I would remind the board, just as a final item, is you've got a policy called the longevity, your longevity policy that's independent of this. You could revisit that. You could create other policies like, like, um, you know, identifying other ways of rewarding employees. So I guess what I would suggest is, is we could, we could take a longer approach through this, this format of these informal meetings and that's fine. You know, all it really changes from a budgetary perspective is we've budgeted for the first proposal. That's what we've budgeted for. If it goes up, we have a mechanism to address it. So I don't want the board to be concerned about that, but it would be nice to get into a structure and then start changing the structure instead of not accepting any structure and continuing to talk about it. So I'd, I'd ask the board to kinda look at those options.
Okay, I think her specific question is this, if we set this, let's say we set it to date. We, we made some modifications, set it to date. And can, if we said, if I said, I will support this if we move the county administrator position to grade, to grade 17 and, and the, the HR director to grade 13, the county engineer to grade 14. And, and with those changes, we can move to accept. I mean, I'm, I'm saying, can we change grades afterward?
You're gonna wanna talk to the consultant before you do that at the end, because you are, you are just taking.
Well, I'm asking you, what, what I, what I understand the question was, can you, and through the appeals process, change grades?
In the appeals process, excuse me, I thought it, accepting, I, I have to defer to you.
Through the appeals process, that's really what it's for, is to make sure that the information is correct and that it's graded correctly. So yes.
So if we, I mean, if we approve something, I don't want us to approve something where I, where we're gonna, where I'm gonna appeal Pat's position because I think he's, he's too high graded. Because with a, in, we, this $20, I don't know where the $10 raise came from. From grade 14, which was the new, was our new proposal, and then to the 20, where did that $10 an hour raise come from? And what's the, how did that, how was that part of this process? So if, if I say, well, I think we, we start them at 17, if the appeal process says, I mean, a third party says then, that's where, that's where my question is. If we, we can't ask people to, we can't appeal to go lower. I mean, the county's not gonna, I'm not gonna appeal if we did this.
Can't bring people's wages down, lower, no.
That's what I'm saying. We can't, I can't, I can't appeal this because I don't think, I think you're being paid at this grade too high. We, I, I can't appeal that.
Well, what, what Pat just said, we, we're not freezing, we're, we're not giving as high of a raise. That, that's what you're talking about, is lowering, and we could, we could lower some of these positions three grades and they're still not gonna be on a pay freeze. Because that, you know, that's, that's just how the, this new pay scale works. But I just, I, I, I think we need to figure it out at us, as a board, where, where it is. And then the employees can appeal it. Like, I don't think we, as the board, should be appealing it.
But with Pat, in, in example of Pat, who, who's gonna appeal something to go lower?
Yeah.
Nobody's gonna appeal something to.
The board.
The board would be the only ones to appeal something. That's where I'm having my problem. I, I, we can't, once it's set, we can't go lower. Once you approve this, you can't lower that, you can't lower that grade unless.
Unless you ask us to.
So can we start with the fact that we'll schedule a, a meeting, whether it's a reg- an alternative board meeting or not, or a work session for, for a future discussion with David Drowne? I just wanted to bring up an example is, just again, to remind the board, and I'm sorry to repeat myself, is the fact is you're currently, you have no structure. So moving to structure and modifying that structure, and I think it, it deserves to have a meeting with David Drowne about that opportunity, is something that we would strongly encourage you to do and then have it evolved. And.
And I think, I think we have said, we, we are in agreement of this structure, just not this way. So, so I, I, I hear ya in that we need structure and because we don't have it. We're, we're getting it, we're just not there yet. So it's not that we're not going to be in structure. It's just not this structure. This, how, this grade, the 19, is just not going to happen.
Not the way it's structured. If it's changed.
What, what, um, what times can we meet? It looks like the end of next week, maybe. 21st, 22nd?
Just tell me when and I'll be there.
We'll have to see if, if, when, if and when.
20.
21st, 22nd.
Yep, 22nd would be the best for me, but 21st.
22nd would work in the morning for me.
Because that, Commissioner Nelson, it's a special meeting. We didn't have enough time to post it three days prior, so.
Whatever, works for me as long as I don't have any meetings. I'm unemployed.
But I, I mean, I, I, I think those, I think we're getting, I think we're, we're understanding the, this better all the time. And I had some good conversations down at AMC that, that helped. And Bob's presentation was very valuable. So I think, I think we're all on the same page. We, we just have to get to the fine, some of the details and.
And Commissioner Nelson, you, you actually stopped by the David Drowne.
Oh, I, I spent quite a few.
Yeah, some of you, I think Commissioner Oakson, you did, I don't know if the others, Commissioner did or didn't, but he was there and available to answer questions.
Yeah. I had a better conversation with the, the other gentleman, actually, but I think, I think, I think we need to move forward. But in the meantime, I think if you have committee levels and they're, and they had changes on the original PAQs, I think you should, the, the committee should review those and see if they're, and they've been submitted by department heads and, and review them just for, make sure. Because he, he was thinking that there might be some that might not be appropriate. And I think when he puts that flag on it, I think the committee should review with department head. And I think we have a few of those, so.
Well, could I, could I ask Carrie, because you've given me an update, but maybe the board's update is, what was the response over the last couple of weeks for updates, the jet packs and stuff that have come back through?
I would say the majority of employees reviewed theirs and resubmitted them. And then the changes is what I outlined to the board is where there was modifications. Some of the jet packs that were modified by positions or employees didn't necessarily shift them on the grades.
Okay, I would, I think courthouse can review administration jet pack to see how, how and why they moved. Did, did administrations submit new PAQs?
No.
No, so that's what's really confusing.
Yeah, yeah. But I think, I would think, bring the, can you, I would like those brought to courthouse then.
Which, the administration?
Yes.
This Thursday?
Yeah.
May as well.
Might as well be Thursday.
So.
That's before that meeting, so.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, so is, is the commission all agreed that Friday, September 22nd, does that work?
Yeah, that works for me.
In the morning, 8:30 would be fine.
8:30.
And I, and I don't know if they'll have all the information. I don't, I highly doubt we'll be able to make, because they'll have to go and get formal information. But I think we have it on there that we may tentatively make a decision at that meeting.
Would you want David Drowne to be available via Teams or in person for that?
We're doing a new consultant.
Yeah.
No, David Drowne is still the same consultant, but a different individual.
Oh, sorry.
David Drowne, I, I think the same thing. Who is?
Mark Goldberg, yes.
Mark Goldberg is called, yeah.
Yes, David Drowne, I would be hopeful.
Yes, absolutely, that's what we want.
We'll make sure that happens, okay?
And I think, I think Teams would be okay with that.
Yeah.
If they're.
Be easier for them.
If this new person, David Drowne comes on, could you reach out to her in advance of this meeting?
We're gonna do it today.
Lay some groundwork, this is our concern.
We will do that.
So.
And I guess one of them being that when we asked for a 19-grade scale, our understanding was that the 14 grade was, the, the wage at the 14 grade was gonna stay the same. And we would create more grades because that, to me, is what the issue is. We, we, what I said at the last meeting was we had, we're on the band and grade, we had 30-some different wage scales that we are smashing down into 12, even on the 14 scale. So what we need to do is look at I don't know, different.
I, I would like to see, if you could reach out to the consultant, I would like to see a, how it works at a 19-grade scale with the top being the same at 14 and 19 would be the same pay. And then go down from there. Where, where are these grades at? And take, take the public, the elected officials off so it doesn't get confusing. I don't think they need to be on there.
I agree with that because we kinda wanted it more grades. Cut the top and say.
Yeah, it didn't, the 20 didn't do anything.
It's confusing too, like.
I mean, and I know, John, I know you're getting frustrated with, but I, we're getting, we're getting. And we'll, it will be.
Frustrated, yeah.
I, hopefully we can, and if, if, if the, they can come with that on Friday so we can see it, that would be awesome. Because then, yeah, then we can look at it and know what we're looking at.
All right. Got direction.
All right, yeah, we gotta get to tea.
Need the tea. Okay, let's move on. Anything else, Pat?
No.
Finance? Thank you, Carrie. And congratulations on winning down at AMC.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm jealous you won a gift, I didn't.
Not to segue from that, but is there anything that you would like Becker County, each of you?
Jerry used to do it. Jerry, Jerry, put you in charge.
And I just want the, the public understands that there's, the county can put together a package that's representative of its county, a basket. And it can, it, it's, there's a drawing, right? And I'm just curious, you know, not every county does it, but we could do that. We could, it's gonna be a while yet for the next AMC meeting, but we'll talk about it.
With my luck, I'd win ours.
One year, I think I had Cindy out, that was in Pig's position. She kinda gave her some guidance. She, she put a lot of stuff together. I added, added more.
All right.
I have no items. The, there are no license lists. I've already handed out finance minutes unless there's any questions.
Okay.
No, thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Do we need to?
Approve it in the consent, so.
I think it was in the consent.
Okay, Jim.
Good morning. Hi, we have just one item for your consideration. It is a D2 agreement with MinDOT. They're planning construction on Highway 34 again. It's coming summer. Between Osage and Park Rapids, they would like to designate our County Road 48, which is, heads north about three miles out of Osage and then east into Park Rapids and then reconnects to 71 and back down to 34. It's their standard agreement. And we have no concerns.
Move to approval 1A.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mr. Cherif, you wouldn't mind, can we move forward to the very end of my segment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We can run through yours pretty quickly.
Okay. First item is our ATV grant resolution 12231B. I'm looking for approval.
Approve, approve.
John?
Second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Stumble bill grant.
I am looking for approval 12231C.
Oh.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Richard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Number two, I am looking for approval to apply for a DWI traffic safety officer. It would be approximately $112,000 for the, for this position. I think there's enough, we have enough traffic in Becker County where we can support the position. There is some matching funds as far as mileage on a, on the vehicle and such, but we're just looking for approval to apply. It would be a board approval to accept, obviously.
Move 1D.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. I think if, if we are approved, I think we have to have the hard conversation of this, if this is a new position or an add-on, because there are other expenses. But I think we apply for it and seeing where it goes, because this is a little bit different position than just a, a general officer. They, they're not restricted from doing anything, but their priorities are different, so.
Correct.
Anyway, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item number three, I'm looking for a, an approval for the food service agreement 12231E.
Move 1E.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries.
3B, resolution 12231G. We have changed from a joint powers agreement with the SWAT team to a memorandum of understanding with recommendation from attorneys.
1G.
Second by John, second by Dave. And this is just changing the, changing the structure, not anything else, I mean, of the agreement, so. All those in favor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Five A.
I'm looking for approval for command post bodywork. Our low quote is in front of you, and this is for, uh, sandblasting and repainting. Low quote is 11,000.
Move to approve.
I'll sec, or, I'll second, low quote.
Motion second to approve the low quote for, for sandblasting our vehicle, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, five B, looking for approval for county highway radio patch, and.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
Got a question, do we find out, do the chain find out if we'll come on, are he, 911 funding, or?
I am not sure.
Keep working.
He is gone, yeah, but we will keep looking at that.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Five C, we have an issue with the jail kitchen floor, it's cracked, we're looking to repair it. We have a quote of 49, 4995, and at the Sheriff's Committee, we're just looking for authority to spend up to that amount, to fix that.
You're gonna seek probably another court.
Correct.
Move to approve.
Motion by John, second by Erica, to approve the kitchen floor repair up to 49, 4995. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And five D is approval to purchase a storage container for the jail. There's some items out there that maintenance is using the garage for, we'd like to move that out into a separate container.
Okay, just, we're gonna back up one step, there was a resolution, but no number on the kitchen floor, is that acceptable to approve that resolution? It states that up to 4990.
Yeah.
And do you wanna give us a resolution number, or just fill that in for us? Okay.
Sure, yeah, we didn't see that, yep, we'll take care of it.
Okay, so now we wanna go to the purchase of a storage.
Storage container, uh, we have a low quote of 4,050.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion second to purchase a 20-foot standard container for 4,050. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Four A.
Thank you. I would like to have Deputy Cody Boucher and Canine Cooper come forward, please? Uh, yes, before I, I get into the resolution, I just wanna talk a little bit about our, our Canine Cooper and, and team of Canine Cooper and Deputy Boucher. He has been with us for seven years? Eight.
Seven, eight.
Yeah. So when I say team, they cannot work alone, obviously. Cody went to training, the dog came to us trained, Cody went to training to be able to work with this trained dog, and.
He wasn't trained.
Oh, okay.
I went down there, I went down there to do training with him, he had some starting, and then, then over the 12 weeks, we both got trained.
Okay. They've some, they've done some amazing feats, and just what I've witnessed, shortly after he came to us, they were called out to look for a felon in a cornfield near Callaway, and these two went in, and when they came out, they were, they were cut up on their hands, Cooper had some cuts on his face, but it was, they were relentless, they ended up catching this guy. And, um, they never give up, that's, it, it's pretty amazing. They had a, I'd like to say seven mile, because it sounds better, but a 6.9 mile track and arrest of a felon. They, they were part of a three dog team that tracked down a, a person that fled from us, bailed out, and traveled down how many miles through the woods on the Rat Lake Trail? And between Cooper, our dog, Durman, and White Earth, they captured this felon. This team is, is known pretty much in this northwest region of Minnesota, and they were called to assist with the FBI and BCA with the search for a murder suspect, suspect in Red Lake County. This guy was out in the woods and swamps and evaded law enforcement for several days. Yeah, yeah. And it's an honor for our office to be called because of this team. It didn't matter, you know, rain, cold, snow, when, when we called him, unless Cody was out of town, they were on, on, en route to our location. And I, I can tell you that he's going to be missed, he's got a retirement date of December 31st, I'm talking about Cooper now. But it's, I, I cannot say enough, and I know Cody wants to speak too, and I'm not gonna take anything away from what he's, he wants to speak about, but as you can tell, when, when Cooper came in, friendliest dog you can, you can imagine, and, but when it was time to work, it was time to work, and, and he knew it, and again, he will be missed. Go ahead.
I just wrote a piece of paper, so I could, I wrote notes down on a piece of paper, so I could remember a few things. Canine Cooper will be retiring at the end of 2023. Canine Cooper has done an amazing job for Becker County and surrounding areas. Canine Cooper started patrol in the spring of 2016, uh, with his first successful track in July of 2016, where an individual ran in many hundred acres cornfield. Canine Cooper tracked the individual, and he was taken into custody. Canine Cooper took first place in narcotics in 2017, has continued to succeed in multiple areas, primarily in tracking fleeing individuals. Canine Cooper has also been called upon for tracking lost individuals. Several tracks of individuals were successfully, were successful, not related to criminal activity. That would include autistic or handicap or elderly that have wandered away. Canine Cooper has approximately 85 deployments, approximately 75 people in custody because of the assistance of Canine Cooper. Canine Cooper's largest drug find is one pound of methamphetamine, countless other narcotics on, finds on traffic stops and residence searches. Canine Cooper has located three individuals on, that fled from a stolen vehicle at one time, that was in a neighboring county that I was called to. Canine Cooper has also located five individuals in an attic of a residence in the northeastern part of our county. That's just to name a few successful incidents. The most memorable track was on 1124, 2017, which is one of Canine Cooper's most memorable track, and the apprehension to date. Cooper and I were called to assist with a fleeing suspect, multiple pounds of narcotics were in the vehicle that was being chased, and eventually ended up crashing into trees on a trail in rural Becker County. The track was approximately 30 minutes old by the time I got there. Canine Cooper and I began the track up for the suspect, which lasted approximately two and a half hours, and was approximately seven miles, 6.9. Canine Cooper tracked through swamps, heavy brush, open fields and trails, which eventually led to the suspect hiding behind a downed tree. He was taken into custody and held accountable for his actions. Canine Cooper's service to the county and surrounding area has kept an unknown number of residents safe in the, in their home, because he has been able to locate and we were able to get that individual into custody. If Canine Cooper and, and his human partners would not have been able to get those individuals in, into custody, it's unknown how many would have broken into a residence to continue to flee, to take occupant, occupants hostage or burglarize their residence. Canine Cooper has visited many schools and been pet by hundreds of kids. Canine Cooper is a very loving dog, and will be transitioning to retirement soon. From a recent vet visit, arthritis has been found in both back hips and his front wrist. Canine Cooper is not quite as energetic as he used to be. Canine Cooper will enjoy his retirement home with another dog and his five human family members. Many thanks to the administration at the Sheriff's Office for encouraging and supporting the Canine program, and a big thank you to the community for supporting the Canine program without support. From all aspects, it would not have been possible. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you Cody, for, for being his, being his partner, significant other partner and, and, and going with the training. I do appreciate you saying how, listing some of those specific events, because they are, I mean, that's what people need to hear, the specific, I mean, you can, you know, maybe lives saved, you know, possible life savings, possible, I mean, you, you just don't know what would happen if, if some of those individuals won't, wouldn't be kept or found, and also the, the saving of, of those people who are just lost and can't find their way out, it's also, but I can't imagine being a criminal in the woods somewhere and hearing that dog barking, I mean, it would, it would, it would be more, to me, it'd be more terrifying than this, turning yourself in, so it's, it's a.
He was a wonderful motivator.
I think it, it deters a lot of that behavior also, knowing that, that they have, that we have the capacity to, to put this out there, and I think that alone saves us a lot of, of, of those type of situations, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you again, and I wish, wish the pup, pup well in retirement and going to a great place, and the other thing, I think Sheriff Glenn had mentioned that in committee that this is, there's, the vet has said there's health reasons why the, the animal should not be, continue using, and I think that's very important in letting the public know that this isn't just where he wants, we just wanna quit this one, this is, for health reasons, this, this dog is not, is, it's not in the best interest of him or the county to, to do, continue on that role, so. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Thank you very much.
Just thank you.
Thanks. It's been a good, good years with him here, so.
Yeah, we found a lot of bad guys and a lot of people lost, and kept a lot of people safe.
I remember when you first came on board, he was friendly at that time.
Yep, a little more energetic then, but.
And I think it also speaks to you as an officer, you know, the fact that you are known, you know, throughout, throughout the state, the state for, for your partnership with Cooper, so, so thank you.
Fun for many different agencies, so it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, thank you for representing Becker County.
Thank you.
One thing I'll add is the instructor for the training that they went through has been in touch with Cody, you know, throughout the years, and, and me, and he, he says it's a phenomenal team, so, thank you. So I'll move on then to Resolution 12231H, I am looking for approval to retire Cooper at the end of December, and I am looking for approval to place him in custody of Cody during his retirement.
Oh, so he'll be staying with Cody?
Yes.
Oh, good.
I'll, I'll move to approval, one H.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
And I should have added, there's a second part of that, we, we would ask that we could give another Canine. I, I know the county, citizens of this county, the community groups, businesses have been overwhelmingly supportive with donations, and I would ask that we are able to accept donations again, because they will be coming.
That's, that's included in that resolution.
It is included in the resolution, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and in the past, both Cody and the other one, been paid for by donations, very well receptive.
Yeah, and, and I know we're, it's already approved, but one thing I just wanted to add, you know, we have drones now that assist us with searches, but they, it can't replace a Canine, and a Canine cannot replace a drone. They work well together, we just had a situation a couple of weeks ago, probably a little longer now, but we're, we used both to capture a felon, so, you know, it's, uh, good teamwork with everything. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you Sheriff Glenn.
Yeah, thanks, Todd.
I can watch him for you, Cody, on the weekends or something, if you need to go somewhere, so.
Kyle. Kyle, I noticed that you put your, on the agenda, right, as close to possible as the cookies.
Yeah. Good morning, I just have a comp line update for you. The first thing I just wanna go over is that work session, that will be January 9th, if, just to confirm your attendance.
Two to four, right?
Two to four. Mitch was gonna confirm with you today, Dave, during your meeting, if you guys can move that rat committee. He said your 24 schedule will be set today.
Okay.
I know some of you.
Yeah, I'll be there. What time he said?
Uh, two to four.
Okay, I did see the email, and it worked with me. All right.
So at that time, the, the, I see Mr. Bo did write a article, so that might generate some more responses, but the survey will close the 15th. We've had a pretty good turnout, especially from just the townships and cities alone, that was 60-some responses or 59. Other than that, I don't have a lot for you, but we'll have all that data collected, and then we'll have a work session with just the two prior to the 9th. On the 9th, we should be able to ask for some direction from you on how we proceed with all that data we have. So other than that, if you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Have they made any other, um, county visits to, with any groups or any public meetings?
No. So we can set those that day as well.
Okay, yeah.
They'll be, they'll be coming.
It has been sent, I don't know if I updated all of you on who it's been sent to, but it has been sent out to most of those groups, Isaac Walton League, Cola, you know, SWCD, all the townships, it's been sent to all of them, so.
Surveying.
Yes, and then also that, it, it does ask them to sign up for the upcoming meetings. When they send out those meetings, whoever signs up will get an email.
Uh, maybe send a list out to Commissioners again, and if we see a group that's not been sent that, maybe we can personally do it, or, or have, maybe, maybe you reach out to them.
Sure, and I have it right here, cause Robin just wanted to know who that list was, so it's already been generated. And then Tony did update the website, so I think there is a link there.
A little bit easier?
Yes.
Good.
Commissioner Nelson, I could ask you, you had 60 that, that was responded by towns, what's the total number of surveys that have been responded to?
Oh, it's close to 300, 288, I think, but that was as of last week.
Weeks ago.
Yeah, I just asked for an updated number, but I didn't get it in time, so hopefully Nate's article will generate a few more.
It was a very well-written article, Nate.
And.
She acts surprised, Nate.
She's trying to get brownie points.
Well.
Okay, anything else? Nope.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Next meeting, we have, at the end of our next meeting, we'll have a closed session for evaluation, if needed, we'll go from there. Any other questions?
Meeting on tax and.
Thursday? Thursday?
Thursday, tax and, Thursday, tax and, 601. I won't be there, so. I wouldn't be there.
Have any road concerns?
No, moved over there yesterday.
Okay.
Few things got moved around a little bit, but I'm trying to get the major projects